Okay, good evening to you all tonight and welcome to the council's June 21 regularly scheduled council meeting. For those of you who may be interested, I'm sure you all know today is the first day of summer, so I'll go ahead and wish you all a happy, happy summer. Some people think summer's already occurred, I guess, but on the calendar at least. And my parents used to tell me, I grew up in a rural area, that today is the, what is it, the longest day, daylight and the shortest night, so I think there's probably truth in that, both, anyway you want, yeah, okay. At any rate, that's enough musing about that. It's time to get our meeting started, so I'm going to ask our clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Present.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Behringer.
Okay, thank you so much. And so at this time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Singleton, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and also lead us in our invocation. Stand if you can.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
If you'd like, please join me in the invocation. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to gather here and discuss important events in our town and our community. Please be with us, council, the staff, and the members of the audience, our citizens, as we discuss these issues this evening. Father, we lift up those who have lost loved ones recently. Be with them, wrap your arms around them to give them their strength to carry on the days and weeks and months ahead. Be with those who are battling sickness, illness, even terminal diseases, Father. We lift up the men and women of the U.S. Armed Forces who are stationed in military bases and installations around this world, protecting the freedoms of our country and the freedoms on which they serve. As you should be with these men and women and their families and protect them as they do their job. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. So, the first item of business always on our agenda is something we call petitions and comments. So I'll share a few statements relating to that. This is the portion of our meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The town council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segments. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And so, Ms. Clerk, I will ask you, has anyone signed up this evening?
No, sir.
But if you are here and you desire to petition the council, I'll give you an opportunity at this time. Is there anyone here who just didn't sign up or would like to do that? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will proceed with the adoption of the agenda. Counsel, what is your pleasure? You have the agenda in front of you, I'm sure.
We read out the agendas as presented.
Sackin. Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, Mr. Matthews. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no, and there is none. Okay, we now have a time for a presentation this evening, and I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Joe Stalings, who is our Economic Development Director, and he has a person he would like to introduce to all of us. Joe?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Councils. Pleasure to be before you here this evening. I have the honor to introduce our new Downtown and Small Business Director, Manager, Shayla Douglas, who's coming to us from UNC's NPA program, and would like to say a special thank you to Mari Howell for her seven years of service in our downtown. And I know Shayla is excited to be here, but this evening is really just about letting her introduce herself to you all and to the community, and so without any more words, I'd like to introduce Shayla Douglas.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. So as Joe said, my name is Shayla Douglas. I'm a recent UNC NPA grad. I'm from a small town called Hamlet, North Carolina, and I'm really excited to be here in Garner and helping the businesses in downtown and businesses across Garner, small businesses and entrepreneurs. I am in the 120 East Main Building, if anybody wants to come see me, and I'm just really excited to work with the DGA Board and Town to help further improve Garner. It's already a great place to be, but, you know, keep keeping it great and keeping everything going.
Well, thank you so much, and we certainly want to make you feel welcome, and so I'm going to give councilmembers an opportunity to do just that or make any comments they want to, but let me say, yeah, I know where Hamlet is, and being from a small town, a place that really wasn't a real town anyway, I can relate to small places at times, but I think and hope you will find Garner in our town here to be a welcoming place, a place that you will do well, and we look forward to some good things with all that you'll do in that, in the downtown area there and all the other responsibilities you have, and of course, have a lot of regard for Mr. Stalings, so he will, he'll give you some good guidance along the way, I'm sure. But thank you and welcome, sure enough. Phil, if you want to recognize-
Welcome aboard. We're growing, as you can tell, and if you go past Mr. Stalings, you're qualified. I feel reasonably sure. In Hamlet, near a community called Rockingham?
Yes.
Okay, I need to make sure I knew where you were at there.
That's where I was born.
There you go. Well, just welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Singleton, anything?
Yes, welcome Shayla. Glad to let you here and work with us. Let me just say this, Mr. Mayor, that Hamlet is substantially bigger than Maple Hill where you came from. Maple Hill's a crossroads down by Highway 53 down there toward Onslow County. Welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I have no basis to defend that, for sure. I don't think there's many places in North Carolina as small as that. Okay, Ms. Behringer.
Well, to say that I'm excited to have Shayla here is an understatement. I live in the downtown area, and having seen the improvements over the years, and today I rode downtown, there was nowhere to park. That was wonderful, and I look forward to more. Right, it was.
It's a good thing.
I just look forward to more improvements, new ideas, new programs, and some new ways of thinking, so welcome.
And Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, I'll say, I've already welcomed Shayla a couple times, being on the board of the Downtown Garner Association with Ms. Behringer. Sorry to see Mari go, but she's still here. I know she's made your transition easier, but you've already hit the ground running from what I've seen in our interactions, and so just glad you're on board.
And Mr. Vance, yeah.
First of all, congratulations on achieving your MBA?
MBA.
MPA?
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations on that, and welcome to Garner, and I know that has been said already, and I do say that welcome to a great place to be.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, with that, unless you have any other comments, we'll let you sit down and, oh, excuse me, yeah, Joe, go right ahead.
So, Ms. Douglas has an important event coming up this Friday, and it would be a shame not to plug it.
All right, let's hear it.
Yes, we have our first night market of the year this Friday from 5:00 to 9:00 in downtown. First one was supposed to be May 27th, but it got rained out, so I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you for that, and we're optimistic that the weather will hold clear this, this time anyway. We had to cancel it early, want to know. Look forward to seeing you there and certainly around town, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, counsel, the next item is the consent agenda. You'll note that there are four items on the consent agenda, and unless any councilmember desires to pull an item, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
A move?
Okay.
Okay, motion properly made and accepted. Any questions? Hearing none. If you favor approving the consent agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, so we're going to move right into our public hearing segment of our agenda, and the first public hearing is, our presenter is Mr. Regional Bowie, I believe, is that right? And so, this is, this is a Tier One Conditional District Rezoning Request with written conditions only, and so Mr. Bowie will recognize you for your report initially, sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we're going to introduce CZ 22-05, Conditional Zoning Amendment for 2967 Benson Road. The address by Keith Roberts, the owner of the property is New Hope Church, is located 2967 Benson Road, and the tract size is 7.66 acres. Again, it's a Tier One Conditional Zoning Request from our residential R20 to Neighborhood Commercial NCC 266, Conditional District. Here you have an aerial photo of the site, and also a street view of the location. The site is surrounded by all residential uses, MF1, R20, R20, and also Indian Creek Mobile Home Park. There've been a few rezoning cases in the areas, six, six to be exact. Existing zoning summary, again, this is R20. Single-family lots will be 20,000 square feet. Maximum density is 2.18 acres. The site contains New Hope Church Incorporated, which is no longer in use. Here you have a list of the proposed conditions from the applicant. I'd like to make note that they have indicated that they would like to use this site for a dance studio. In overview of the request, it is from to rezone the lot from residential R20 to Neighborhood Commercial NC C266. Site is located near the intersection of NC 50 Benson Road, Woodbrook Way, and Indian Creek Trail. Is mostly bounded by residential land uses with office institutional, office industrial and commercial uses at its main intersections. Here you have some traffic counts from 2009 to 2019. It's been about 3,000, over those years, been a 3,000 per day increase in the amount of traffic. Neighborhood meeting was held on May 11, 2022, with eight persons in attendance. You see the people that were in attendance listed there? And these are the minutes from the meeting. Reading through those, all of the questions that the community had were pretty well answered by the applicant. If you have any questions about those, the applicant is here, that a representative is here to speak on behalf of their application. When considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. This will include the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted plans include parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources as well. We recommend that once you've had, you've heard all comments, that we forward this request, CZ 2205, to the planning commission for review and a recommendation. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Yeah, we'll, we'll start with Mr. Vance on my right and see if he has any questions for you, sir.
I have a question at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
Uh, no.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, anything? Miss Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Matthews, okay? Okay, I believe I was going to recognize Keith Roberts at this time. Oh, excuse me, okay. You're deferring to, okay, if you will just give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am Beth Blackman with Simmons Group. I am here speaking on behalf of Keith Roberts, but he is also- I am here speaking on behalf of Keith Roberts, but he is also here if you have any questions for him. Address is 113 Lager Lane, Garner. We are representing the New Hope Church property owners and Christie Wood, who is looking at this property, as Mr. Bowie said, for her dance studio. We've been working with Christie for a while. She has owned the studio in Garner for 22 years, and she's worked really hard to build a community and a family with that dance studio, and she's looking for an opportunity to expand, have some more room, be able to offer some other activities, have some of that outdoor space, you know, if we wanted to have family gatherings for weekends, you know, have a cookout and stuff like that with the different dance teams. My daughters both danced at Christie's, Keith's daughters danced at Christie's, so we have a lot of history with Christie and have really enjoyed working with her. So the church on Benson Road is currently vacant. A church is allowed in a residential zoning district, but that building is not something that could easily be used by someone else in a residential zoning district unless another church was going to occupy it. So really, pretty much anything that was going to go into that building and reuse the existing facility would need a rezoning, since, you know, it's a eight, seven, eight thousand square foot building that's not suited for residential use. So we've here to request a neighborhood commercial rezoning with the permitted uses that Mr. Bowie showed, and Christie intends to operate this as a dance studio. She has been operating at Aversborough Square for quite a few years and is hoping to be able to grow and expand her facility. And like I said, Christie's here, Keith and I are both here, if you have any questions for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your conciseness there. Council, questions for this, for this individual? I'll start. Phil, anything?
Christie's, they've been around a long time, very well-known, very good business, and I think this will be a good move for going in out there, and, because a lot of growth's gonna be going down that way and give you the space you need, so glad to see who's going in there.
Okay, Ms. Singleton.
Questions? Both of my daughters danced at Christie's also.
My daughter did years ago, but she's grown now. Anything?
No questions in the same regard, my daughter too.
Okay, wow, Mr. Dellinger.
No questions, just a comment that it's good to see small, local businesses have space to grow and to see sort of residential convert over to commercial and support the community.
Okay, Mr. Vance.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I would remind us all this evening that this, this matter won't formally be decided tonight since this, it's recommended that this go to the planning commission after the hearing this evening, and council has a chance to weigh in, and then it will come back to the, it will come back to the council at a later time. Is there anybody else for the applicant that wishes to make any presentation at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Are there members of the public here who desires or desired to make any comments at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I believe we can close a public hearing and ask for a motion.
May I move that the Conditional Zoning Request with CZ 22-05 be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency?
Second. Okay, thank you so much. So council, you have the motion before you, and what is your pleasure? If you support this motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And it is so ordered, so thank you very much, and thank you all for your presentations, and so we will hear from you after planning commission has had an opportunity to consider the matter. All right, the next item before us is Conditional Zoning Map Amendment with the Master Plan CZ MP 2110. We will hear from Mr. Trezenberg. I believe this is a, this, this item was tabled back on May the 17th, and so this is a continuation of that hearing, that you're understanding, Mr. Trezenberg, so I guess I will just reopen the hearing at this time, okay? Recognize you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Again, Jeff Trezenberg, Planning Director, giving David a little break here this evening from presenting, so I'll be handling the next three cases. This is continued from your last meeting. The applicant again is RTS Development. You see the property owners listed there. We're talking about a 62.9 acre tract of land, and we are considering a Tier Two Master Plan rezoning that includes a master plan sketch along with written conditions. The master plan does show a maximum of 463 units, 87 single-family detached, 106 town homes, and 270 apartments. The uses are restricted along with architectural and site amenity conditions. We're not gonna go and revisit all that, but just for folks' general information, here is the site location. You have Manor Ridge Drive here, which is the one road between 1010 and Simpkins Road that connects 401 and Lake Wheeler. And then again, you have 1010 down here. RST is doing also this project over here known as the 401 Assemblage. And then, of course, we have the Rand Village Development occurring here, Costco site, and then, of course, McCullers is just off the screen. Again, here is the, the proposed master plan. Again, you see the town homes clustered here largely in the southwest corner of the site, single-family in the northwest corner of the site. And I say corner, we have these two collectors traversing the site, one north-south and one east-west. And then we have apartments over here in anticipation probably of two different styles, these being a little more reflective perhaps of a garden style, these perhaps an enclosed breezeway here. See various amenities scattered throughout the project, and there will be trails linking the northern and southern portions of the site. Since we last talked about this, the applicant has been in some discussions with the neighboring property owner. Staff has reviewed this as well, and the proposed condition that they have come to you with tonight is that a sanitary sewer manhole will be provided on the JDS Farms LLC property. And just so everybody's familiar, that's this property over to the west, on the other side of Pope Branch. Prior to first final subdivision plat recordation, JDS Farms will provide the necessary temporary and permanent easements that would be required for construction and acceptance. As you know, City of Raleigh will be the recipient of those easements and need to do the acceptance. If this crossing and installation is denied by either the Division of Water Resources or the US Army Corps, a sanitary sewer manhole will be installed as close to Pope Branch, JDS Farms property line, as possible, and along the northern half of the common property line. So again, somewhere in this portion of the site. A design will be completed in order to calculate a fee and lieu payment, and proof of said fee and lieu payment having been paid and accepted, along with the recordation of easements granted to incorporate construction requirements for the future installation, all that needs to be done prior to first final subdivision plat recordation. Again, some of this is not really directly involved with the town, but is an agreement between the two private parties, so the town would be asking for proof of those transactions to have taken place. That's all I have for you as an update. The applicant is here as well, and if you have any questions for us, we'll be glad to try to answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trezenberg. And Ms. Behringer, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Trezenberg?
No.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Question, uh, two issues last meeting that were specific. That was, one was the manhole cover location, and the other, you have highlighted in our package, in our agenda package, now since the last meeting, the applicant has met with neighbors and reached out to environmental permitting agency, et cetera, et cetera, and they have come to a mutual agreement about an alignment, correct?
Um, my understanding is that everybody's okay with generally what is shown right now, in that, yeah, if it's still subject to the permitting from the environmental agencies, the applicant has reached out to them, but that can be a somewhat lengthy process. We at this time don't have any kind of preliminary information. My understanding that this general location is okay with all the parties involved, and that is okay to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Those are gonna be my questions too, Mr. Mayor, so if they have reached a mutual agreement and all is well, that's kind of what I wanted to hear.
This way. Mr. Dellinger.
Is there any further presentation, or is this it?
This is it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm still not in favor of this project because it's not consistent with our future land use plan that explicitly says there should be a commercial component to this project. It's, it's black and white. There are residential, and then there's mixed, and this is supposed to be mixed. And it's interesting that on a night we're probably gonna approve a budget, that this project sort of exemplifies what's driving the tension and difficulties we're having on the budget side, because it's not generating a diverse street, not generating diverse streams of revenue for the town. Last time, the developer got up and said that commercial wasn't viable on this site. Explicitly said that. There's a Chick-fil-A, AutoZone, Costco, the list goes on and on. There's Christie's Dance Explosion's gonna be out on Highway 50, not near, nearly as many residential. So I just don't, I'm not in favor of this project because it's not consistent, and it's not doing what it needs to do for the tax base of this town, and ultimately gets shifted onto the homeowners. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I would remind council that we will have some further opportunity to discuss any concerns, but again, the proper course of action, I think, will be to refer this to the planning commission. Mr. Vance?
I just have one thing, several things to say, reference to the questions that were asked at the last meeting pertaining to this particular development. They, I see that they have been addressed to a certain extent, and as we go on through the process, we'll be able to look at more refined plans and things of that nature as they go through the process. So I'm inclined to say with what Councilman, Councilman Phil Matthews said, that the, the community has come together and discussed the issues and hopefully come to some resolution. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Who is representing the applicant in this manner?
Keith Roberts is here.
Okay. Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Mayor, we're the council, Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive, Garner, North Carolina, and I'm standing here tonight representing, I guess, all, all parties, some of the spoke last time, of the neighbors and also the developer, and it's been a, a big effort since the last meeting to get everybody together. I've had multiple meetings with adjacent landowners, multiple phone calls, emails, face-to-face meetings, and we've all come to a happy place, I think. So based on, if I say anything wrong, feel free to throw something at me, so, but based on those meetings where we are tonight, we're in agreement that the, the connection to the west, road connection, everyone is good with that location. That was a location also that the town had recommended prior to the, prior to the last meeting, and a lot of, a lot had gone into it even prior to the last meeting, and we had reached out to DWR and the Corps, and they didn't have any objections to it, they just couldn't officially approve it without having an official application and a design done. So I think we got all the feedback, or best feedback we could get in that regard. I think, you know, what part of, in talking to Mr. Dan Matthews, who spoke at last meeting, part of his concern on the road crossing was the sewer and the sewer coming across there in that area, and whether or not it would be viable for his project. And so over the last month, in talking to, to Dan, we just came up with an agreement to make sure he would get a sewer manhole on his property, and, and based on that condition, was a condition that myself and Dan Matthews went back and forth on, on multiple occasions, and came to, again, to a happy place. So we're all good with that, I believe. And then the connection road to the south, which Brenda Compton spoke about at the last meeting, we've met with Brenda and also Mr. Matthews on the, Tommy Matthews on the south property about that connection, and they're, they're in some talks with the town currently about what's the best use for the property to the south, and thinking, you know, whether it would be commercial or whether it would be, you know, residential. So the road to the south may move a little bit before we come back to the third meeting for the rezoning vote, but at the moment, all parties have reviewed the plan, looked at it, and everybody seems to be happy at the status currently and what we're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and I'm pleased to hear of the discussions you've had with others that perhaps has brought it to a, a more favorable circumstance than maybe what it was before, I guess. Questions for Mr. Roberts? I'll start down with Mr. Vance.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
I'm glad you're able to work things out with the adjoining property owner and come to an agreement. You know, you're originally from Garner, you're, I mean, you're not originally from Garner, but you're a Garner guy, and I want to get your feedback on this lack of commercial opportunities on what was in our comprehensive plan from 2018 that the taxpayers paid for, staff worked on, and it was envisioned that for the 60-plus acres, there would be a significant commercial component.
I, I think, you know, the best way to answer that, and I've, I've had this conversation in the past with other projects, you know, as, as engineers, you know, we are planners, we work for developers, and typically, now so more than it was in the past, a lot of these folks have a national component, and I think we have to put some trust into the research they do. You know, I, I say, you know, back 20 years ago, we dealt with a lot more local mom-and-pop type developers who didn't have the, the means to do research as far as demographics or what is viable on a piece of property, but in a day's time, everyone is working close with real estate agents to get feedback. Sometimes it's not what we want to hear. I think my best example is we were working on a potential public site in Garner that I thought would be a great site in Garner for Publix, and Publix turned it down because they said the demographics in Garner would never support a Publix, and it made me kind of upset as a Garner person, you know, but as someone who did the research, they decided that the Publix needed to go somewhere else. And so I, I think it's hard for us to sit here and, and make judgment on a developer as far as what they do with a piece of property when they have usually a lot more insight to it than we have as far as what the property would actually support and what the research shows and what's in the area. And there's already some commercial, as you mentioned, in the area, and there's also the fear of getting, you know, too much commercial in a certain area with Costco and everything else going out there, but, but I think there will be some more commercial out there. I think the property to the south, which is owned by the same family, they're cousins, I think we're looking at that as being commercial now, more than residential. Based on the last conversation I had with, with Brenda last week, we're pretty confident that's gonna be mostly commercial on the front, and then maybe multifamily on the back as a mixed-use, but commercial on, on the front, and, and hopefully that'll come to you in the next year, but we're not ready to present that tonight. But, but again, I think this goes back to, you know, the trust we have in, you know, obviously, nobody wants their project to fail, so I think a lot of folks, you know, are putting a lot of time and research into what goes on to these properties and are not just haphazardly picking what, what goes there.
I mean, I think it's interesting that an adjoining property could support, support commercial, but then this isn't, and this is one of the largest tracts. That's my only comment. I still think, it's not, I drive around a lot in Wake County, I see what other communities are, are getting, and what developers they're getting, and the projects they're getting that are bringing in additional real estate tax rate, tax income, property taxes, retail, sales tax income, and, and we're just getting left behind, so that's my only comment.
Okay, Mr. Vance, anything? Okay, Kathy, I give you a chance. Okay, down here? Anything? Anything? Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the applicant wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. Are there, are there other persons here who wished to speak at this public hearing this evening? Hearing and seeing none. Council, the issue is before you, and again, the anticipated motion is to refer this to the planning commission, so I believe a motion is in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that the conditional zoning map amendment with master plan, CZMP-21-10 Bennett Assemblage, that we refer this to the planning commission.
Motion is properly before you, haven't been seconded. All in favor, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Opposition, no?
No.
Okay, noted that the motion passes on a four-to-one vote. So thank you all, Mr. Roberts and others, for your work on this, and we, we wish you success moving forward. We'll hear back from you after it goes to the planning commission, okay? All right. Good to see you all. Mr. Treesenberg, are you up for the next public hearing?
Sir.
Okay. I recognize you, sir, at this time and open the public hearing.
All righty, so this is the public hearing for the Walters Buffalo Tracks. This is a project that you've been hearing about but have not yet formally seen related to the improvements along White Oak, White Oak Road that are necessary in order to signalize the intersection at White Oak and Bryan. Here's your cursory information. The applicant is Pulte Home Company. The location, as I noted, is along both New Bethel Church and at the end of Wind Road. The overall assemblage is just over 130 acres, and again, this is a Tier Two request, so it comes with a master plan as well as written conditions. The current zoning, again, is single-family R-20, which is about the densest you can get under well and septic, so that this comes back as a historical designation from long before utilities were anywhere close to this area. They are asking for the multifamily designation, but it is including, inclusive of both town homes and single-family detached, the single-family detached in a cluster format. Right now, the density as proposed in the master plan comes in at around three units per acre, and the zoning conditions will limit it to no more than 3.1. So here is the assemblage of property. Again, Wind Road comes down from the South Garner High School and dead ends here currently. Hebron Church Road and New Bethel, and the bridge across 40. So everything kinda here in the northwest corner of 40 and New Bethel. Here's a scene from Google Earth. This is the corner of Hebron and New Bethel Church Road, so we're talking about all of this land, probably as far as you can see and back over to the left. In terms of the adjacent zoning and land use, most of it is either R-20 or R-40. Of course, here's the old spray fields that are now City of Raleigh. Here's Meadowbrook Park. There is some, some mobile homes in the area, so you'll see those areas noted as RMH. And of course, the high school and the old Bethel subdivision, which is now called Oak Manor, I believe. Pretty extensive zoning history out in this area. Again, most of it has been going from R-40 and R-20 to various residential categories. There were a couple of denials at different points, one related to Sutton Springs back in 2010, and the Sheets on the corner of NC-50 and New Bethel back in 2012. That brings us up to today, most recent case being Ridge Moore South, which is a little townhome enclave pretty much across from Meadowbrook Park on Hebron. So again, single-family R-20 is the current zoning. It's a general district, so all uses in that district are currently allowed. In terms of the permitted uses, again, they have limited it to the residential cluster format as well as town homes. They have proposed architectural and site design conditions. Those will continue to be refined based on staff input, public input tonight and outside of this meeting, your feedback and feedback from planning commission. Those are listed in your report. I'm not gonna spend time going over all of those individually unless you would like an explanation of any of those. I will call out condition number 20. That is currently being reviewed by us, particularly the town attorney's office, as to the legalities and form of that condition. Our conditions in the past have typically focused on the timing and sequencing aspect of improvements in relation either to the number of building permits or COs granted. So we are looking at the possibility of whether or not some of this can be incorporated into a separate developers' agreement that would get approved at the same time, or whether we can handle it through conditions as part of the zoning process. But in general, that condition number 20 is the assurance condition that the road improvements along White Oak will either be improved, or in the case of something just going tremendously wrong, what that payment would be as a fallback. Overall neighborhood character, this is around, of course, South Garner High School, so we are seeing this translate from rural agrarian to suburban residential. The traffic around this area, this immediate area, is quite low because you're on a pretty much a dead end to nowhere at that point. But obviously, this does have traffic impacts going back into town, and thus, that's why we have the commitment to the improvements on White Oak Road. It does have 4,200 feet, so almost a mile of frontage along New Bethel. It is a undersized road or unfinished road by town standards, so it needs to be widened with curb and gutter and stormwater. So I think by the time you wrap in the frontage on Hebron Church, you're at well around a mile and a quarter of widening that they're gonna have to be doing. TIA was required by the town UDO and NCDOT. It was completed back in October. The following offsite improvements were identified to be completed, so at Hebron and Wind Road, they will be constructing an exclusive southbound left on Hebron Church with at least 75 feet of storage. So coming south on Hebron towards the development, there will be a dedicated left at Wind Road. Hebron Church and the new access point, number one, to the southern part of the site. Again, there will be one ingress and egress lane and a, again, a dedicated southbound left on Hebron, this time with 50 feet of storage and appropriate taper. Of course, the White Oak improvements are above and beyond what the TIA got to. So it was determined that traffic signalization, again, we know, is warranted at Bryan and White Oak Roads, but we did discover with our conversations, again, with DOT, that White Oak needs to be widened to a four-lane section of some kind between Hillendale and Salt Hill Road to prevent southbound traffic on White Oak from backing up into the Timber Drive East intersection. So again, zoning condition number 20 would be the condition opposed to accomplish that, and that if this work is done, NCTOT has indicated that they will complete the signalization there at the intersection. Staff identified 27 properties at the time they were having their neighborhood meeting, which was held on April 25th. There were five folks in attendance and two from outside the notification area. And here is the master plan. Again, we're talking about 393 approximately dwelling units total. Just so you can see the whole site together, you have the town homes here closest to Hebron Church. Single-family then stretching back along New Bethel and up into Wind Road. Give you a little bit more of a close-up of each section. So you do have a pretty substantial Neuse Riparian buffer here along the northern portion of the site that will be a nice buffer to the properties to the north. In working with the developer, we did ask them to propose some off-street trail connections linking the primary amenity area, one of them over here, to some of the other smaller areas, including the dog park and this little area right in here. There is an existing gas easement that traverses quite a bit of the site. There are some limitations that come with that. Unlike an overhead power easement, they don't like trails and things like that going parallel with the easement. You can be just outside of the easement. With the overhead lines, they're, they're much more willing to let you have a trail meander. So with gas easements, you can cross, just not go along. So here again is that one major common amenity with a big open playfield. We did ask them to add a couple of mini roundabouts in a couple of locations or mini traffic circles along some of these longer stretches with driveway access pretty frequently to help calm traffic internally. An herb garden, fitness park are some of the ideas that they've presented. Again, trails potentially coming along here that would help connect the southern and northern portions of the site. And then the main amenity over here with the pool and rec center up against I-40, as you can imagine, it's, houses backing up to the interstate are probably a little bit of a tougher sell, so this made for a nice possibility to put in the amenity and their pump station, which will be right across on the other side of the gas easement. Then kind of rounding the corner and moving north, again, here's the main amenity and pump station. Again, you see the trails coming through here to connect some of the outer line recreation areas, and again, another mini traffic circle here at this intersection. That carries over to right here, again, the mini traffic circle, and here your connection to Wind Road. So this is the dead end of Wind Road. We also discussed with them the possibility of refer, or at least reserving a future greenway easement here in the northern portion of the site to possibly allow for a future connection into Meadowbrook Park without having to go all the way down Wind Road to Hebron and back into the park that way. So here are the general lot size and setbacks. Those are in your report. I won't spend too much time on those. Landscaping and buffers, at the time this was submitted, we were on the 12% to 14% scale. The master plan already shows just preservation at 15.8 acres. So again, I don't think it's gonna be problematic for them to really actually get to the threshold of our latest amendment to that portion by the time they include all of the street trees and other plantings at their, at their park facilities. The perimeter buffer for a cluster development is 30 feet, so that has been provided around the entire development. And street trees, again, need to be provided every 40 feet. See, there are a number of riparian buffers. We pointed those out as possible trail locations, but here you can kinda see the various blue lines. These streams flow to the east under I-40 and eventually join White Oak Creek. Water and sewer service, again, will be provided and serviced by Raleigh Water. There is a, at this point, they have gotten a preliminary, yes, we can investigate this for their pump station here to potentially manifold into the existing force main that runs from the water treatment plant at 50, there at Benton Treatment Plant at Lake Benson, and going back up to the Neuse River Treatment Plant. And then water is nearby and will be extended from the school further down to the south and across all adjacent properties. At full site plan review, again, just a reminder that staff will be looking at the lighting requirements as well as a little more specificity about the stormwater management devices to ensure that they are properly sized. We'll look at water line sizing, hydrant spacing, and again, landscaping and parking will also be re-verified as the project continues. Again, just a reminder that when considering these rezoning requests, the planning commission is required by state statute to make that written recommendation for you regarding the plan's consistency with adopted plans. And it's back to you, you will be responsible for approving a statement regarding the reasonableness of your action. So for right now, staff recommends that once you have heard public comments, concerns, and questions, that this request then be referred to the planning commission per the UDO for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. Again, if you have any questions at this time, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Here to speak as well.
Okay, we'll anticipate hearing from that person in just a minute. So, so I'll start with Mr. Vance, if he has any questions for you, Jeff?
I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger, questions for Mr. Treesenberg?
Yes, and I'll save all my condition 20 questions for later because I've got a lot associated with that. Just questions about New Bethel Church Road and what the ultimate build-out for New Bethel and 40 are, and then what the ultimate term is for New Bethel will be, if we know.
At this point, there's no plan to connect New Bethel through. There have been some high-level studies that have looked at whether or not it might be possible to eventually extend it over to Cornwallis, but nothing definitive at this point. I do know that the, the big interchange is wiping out a lot of that area, so my guess is that it may remain a dead end. So we would be, again, I think, requiring just our collector section, which is usually just two, two lanes plus a center turn lane.
Question is, do you also own the land, some of the land to the south as well, a parcel? I saw it was all one parcel that crossed onto the southern side of New Bethel. Is that correct?
So, yeah, the, the property to the south of New Bethel is not part of this request. That probably really results from a unrecorded subdivision of property. Back in the day, you didn't necessarily have to have a plat, so when the right-of-way was recognized, it was still shown as one parcel. But my understanding is that they are just under contract for the northern portions.
Another question is, you know, without New Bethel going out, really, the only two ways out of this part of Garner are New Bethel and White Oak. And I checked the traffic counts, and White Oak was at 25,000 a day, which is the same as Highway 70 from New Rand to White Oak, and Highway 50 from New Bethel to Timber is at 17,000 already, and then south it's at 20,000 already. And we used to, 6,000 new residents to move down there, building out 2,000 more homes. So my question is kind of, are these neighborhoods down there getting, are they gonna be blocked in? There aren't that many ways in and out, so what is the remedy for that?
As we've discussed before, it's really widening the existing facilities on White Oak and 50, punching Ackerman through to 50. At least you end up at the same point, but at least it's a different intersection. And really, it's the intersections where- And really, it's the intersections where things get critical. Certainly, signalizing Bryan will also make that a more attractive option going forward. So hopefully, you know, in the long run, then, with those four intersection points. The other key improvement is going to be the extension of Timber Drive East down to White Oak, which will come in further east than where Hebron Church currently runs into White Oak. So potentially, that can divert a lot of traffic on White Oak itself, that being already being constructed as a four-lane divided facility. So there's really, I think, two large properties there, at least one of which I know is under consideration for possible development proposals. So really, it's kind of working on all of those things at once. Don't know which one's going to come in first, but this project would propose to at least solve part of the problem with the widening at White Oak and being able to install a signal at Bryan.
Question related to traffic. We looked at changing the speed limits down in that part of Garner, working with DOT. I drove down today, I didn't realize the speed limit on New Bethel, in front of that development's 55, Wind Road's 45, and New Bethel's 45. And that seems, those all seem like really fast speeds for what's becoming more and more residential neighborhoods. Is that something we need to look at?
Yeah, I mean, I would defer to Chris, our town engineer, on some of that stuff. But yeah, as this area does go from rural to more residential neighborhoods, I would totally see that as a practicality of what would need to happen.
Okay, I'll come over to Phil for any...
No questions this time.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
I'm ready, sir. I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Just to follow up on the pump station, so they had talked with Raleigh and got preliminary approval for the pump station, which would go to Wind Road and then to the Forest Main. Okay. So that is something that, as I look at this property, which is on the perimeter of 40 and New Bethel and up at the corner of Hebron Church, of course, there's property in the middle. Would that pump station ever be of any assistance to any other development that may come out of this, what we're seeing on the screen?
So this is, originally, Mr. Walters was looking at developing his portion of the property by himself and without any public water and sewer. So when this came in, we did encourage them to kind of get all together to discuss this as a, kind of a holistic solution for this area. Everything from, there's a draw that runs through here, just south of Meadowbrook Park, and then a couple of other draws through here. So this is located to potentially then help serve all of this up to Hebron Church, which again is another high point. So everything to the east of Hebron would potentially drain to this location.
And the northern point here, the property right there, yes, that directly touches Meadowbrook Park, it's right beside, that's why the greenway has been asked for to extend into that. Okay. And that would start where, somewhere down where you're still in consideration, so I don't need to get that far into the weeds. But anyway, it's being asked to, so it will connect directly to the park.
So we would have that easement reserved to make that happen.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Behringer? Anything? So you feel, I got to you, right? Yep, okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff. I'm supposing we will next hear from the applicant, is that right? Okay. Thank you, sir. Beth's again. Okay. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Beth Blackman with Simmons Group, 113 Lager Lane, Garner. I want to thank y'all for considering this conditional rezoning. I am here with the developers and other consultants, Keith Roberts, traffic engineer from VHB, and Randy King and Rob Rudloff from Pulte. So some of the questions, particularly traffic, will not be for me, but there are others here that can help assist answer those questions. Thank you for the presentation, Jeff, and we would like to consider a proposal for townhomes and single-family cluster development. This area is identified as medium-density residential on the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, and this density that we're proposing falls into that range that is recommended for that land use category. We did implement some, a small section of townhomes. Without some portion of townhomes, it is difficult to achieve the two and a half units or acre that is recommended for the medium density. And it gives you a little bit of variety as far as price points and home sizes. The transportation plan, as y'all have brought up, New Bethel Church Road is a dead end. But on the transportation plan, there is a future collector connector street that would kind of make a circle from Win Road up to New Bethel through this site up to Wind Road. And so this site would be responsible for the Wind Road to New Bethel Church Road portion of that. And so eventually, hopefully, it all gets you back to the same place. It all gets you back to Hebron Church Road and New Bethel Church Road. But at least somebody wouldn't end up at the end of a dead end with having to just turn around and do it all over again. And we have worked with staff on conditions, architectural conditions. I will let you defer those to the developer. But we've worked on some ideas for the different amenities and the trails and having some connectivity throughout the whole neighborhood. Obviously, there'll be quite a bit of sidewalks. And we are looking at, we discussed the mini roundabouts with staff of how to, you know, sort of break up that, those sections of street where you might have driveways and people out, and you want to make sure people are slowing down and stopping where they should be stopping. So if you have any questions for me, or I will defer you to some of the others this evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions on this end here?
In regards to the ranches and the conditions on here, stated there'll be a third of the single-family hunt. Let me ask this question. It says, age-targeted ranches will make up 33% of the total single-family detached unit. So we're talking of the 278, a third of those, correct?
Yes, and our last conversation was that instead of a minimum, that should be a maximum of 33% was the last conversation that we had had with staff.
A maximum of 33%. So a third of them will be ranch, single, built-on slab, so it's easy access for people 55 and older. Okay. All right.
So, yeah, I was just, I think I saw this before, the zoning condition limit, the gross density to a maximum of 3.1 per acre, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Ms. Behringer? Okay. Mr. Dellinger? Okay. And Mr. Vance? Okay. Much, who are we going to hear from next, from the applicant?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rob Rudloff. I'm with Pulte Home Company. We're excited to be here tonight. I guess I should give my address, 1225 Crescent Green Drive in Cary, North Carolina. We're very excited to be here tonight. I think Beth and her team did a great job putting together a master plan that, you know, provides a great variety of amenities and will be a positive for the town of Garner. And she's worked extensively, I think, with staff to refine that plan. And I think this, the plan before you today is a reflection of all that work. So we do appreciate your time tonight and look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vance?
Questions? Good evening. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Randy King with Pulte Homes.
I'm sorry. Well, go ahead. I was going to have to see if the council had questions for Rob there, but...
I'm very sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Go ahead.
Randy King with Pulte Homes. Glad to be here again. I'm here really to address any questions that we might have about the off-site roadway improvements on White Oak Road. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we'll continue to see if there are questions for either one of these gentlemen. I forget where I was. Ms. Behringer, I don't think I called on you yet. Okay. Singleton, do you have any?
I know Mr. Dellinger asked some questions on the off-site improvements, and I'll let him start because I probably may have some too.
Okay. Well, let me start with Mr. Vance, then I'll come back to Ms. Dellinger. Okay, Ms. Dellinger?
Nothing yet. I'm waiting, there are a lot of people here. I want to hear from the public as well. I'll get to it.
Okay, I guess no questions at this time for either one of you then, okay? Was there, and this next gentleman, if you'd come forward, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bahong Wan. I'm a traffic engineer with VHB and Erie, working with Randy King and Pulte Homes and working with him on this side. We complete traffic study and then review about the town, and we work with town and DOT to do above and beyond and with White Oak riding project. And I'm here today just to say I'm very happy to listen to your concerns and then happy to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Okay, any question for this gentleman? Okay, none? Thanks, sir? This time, all right? Okay, is that pretty much, we've heard from the applicant, is there anyone else from the applicant that was planning to speak? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will ask if there are members of the public who desire to speak. And I think I will ask if, I know there's a number of people in the audience there, are there, could you sort of signify, how many of you are here in regards to this particular hearing? Maybe by raising your hand? Okay. Okay, there's two back there. All right, I don't know if you have designated a speaker, but ordinarily, when a large group of people appear on the same cause, we would prefer, I guess, to see a designated person or two, or person to a three that can come and speak to the issue that represents the position of most all of you. So is there such a person? Okay.
Well, I'm not that person.
Okay.
But I do want to speak.
Okay.
And I was first one to sign up.
Okay. Why don't we recognize you now, Mr. Lee? I think many here, even on staff, know you, sir, but if you'll give us your name and your address, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, town staff, and guests. My name is Paul Alexander Lee, Jr., and my address is 8345 Hebron Church Road, Garner. I have lived on this farm for 71 years. Now, the first part, the first 16 months, I lived in Harnett County. But my parents brought me up here, and I was raised there. And my wife and I, or my parents bought this farm in '51, and they struggled to pay for it, and they raised myself and my sister. And we both became productive citizens of this community. My wife and I live there now, along with one of our sons and his family, so our grandchildren are being raised there also. I'm here to speak on the Waters Buffalo Project that is before you tonight. And the reason I spoke first and knew I was going to speak was because it affects me more than anybody else in this room. I have appeared before you previously about other densely proposed developments in this community, but most of all, about traffic on our second-rate farm-to-market roads. I remember when the roads were even paved down there, and most of you heard me say this, that these, they were all dirt roads in there when I was growing up. And they didn't pave any of them till I was gone and grown and gone to college. But the project now is in my backyard. It had before, the ones I was talking about with traffic were along the other roads. It affects me joining on the south side of my property because it adjoins all of my property on the south side. But it affects me in traffic on Hebron Church Road because I have all the road in front of it there. And it also affects me with traffic on Wind Road. I've always heard that fences make good neighbors. So this is really the mainly thing that I'm asking, and we have talked with the people from Pulte. We would, you know, about getting some fencing done there. And, I mean, I've suggested the cheapest thing that they could do that was reasonable, and I'm hoping we can work out something about that. Another concern, too, is that on TV the other night, it was reported that one out of every four housing units in this type of development is being bought by out-of-state investors for rental property. We don't need rental property here because you know what happens to rentals, I mean, rental property. And we would love to see these properties as owner-occupied. Thank you for your time and the hard decisions you have to make for the citizens of Garner. Even though I'm not in the city limits of Garner, I do pay taxes, you know that, but I still consider myself a Garner person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay. I will hear from a few others. I'm pretty sure not all of you can expect me to speak. We don't have time for everybody to do that. But who else perhaps, either by consent or otherwise, is designated to speak for the concerns of the folks here? Is there another person?
I'd like to speak.
Okay, come on up.
Hey, my name is Joe Cook. Live at 2524 Wind Road. I butt up right against that property there on the end of the street. I'm really concerned about the use of Wind Road because there's about 90 houses at the end of the Wind Road. And right now, it's about a 20-foot-wide road with a 45 mile an hour speed limit, and it's windy. My daughter-in-law and son use that road to walk, and neighbors use it to exercise, walk their dogs, and I'm just worried about the safety. If they could do something concerning that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay, is anyone else? All right. Comments, questions by council at this point in time before we move to the action that we were requested to take this evening? I'll start with, I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
I have concerns as well as far as the privacy and the fencing and then the safety of Wind Road. We can't spend enough time being concerned about the well-being of our citizens, so I'll just focus a little bit more with the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Trezenberg. I know I read it on here, refresher, and I'm missing it. What, the only improvement, stated improvements they have to make, as I understand it, on Wind Road is at the intersection of the Hebron Church Road with the left turn lane, southbound left turn lane. And then if this is approved, then where they connect up there at... Where they connect, where they, if it's approved and they build the portion of the road that they build to connect to Wind Road will have curb and gutter on both sides, right, and be how wide?
I believe that's a 60-foot right-of-way, Beth? There's a 55-foot right-of-way and a...
Two foot back to back?
Yeah. 32 feet back to back.
Okay, and how wide is Wind Road now? Is this an air, unimproved road with ditches, right? So as my memory recalls.
Should be state minimum.
Minimum.
Right.
Key word there. Okay. So you're going from the 32 to a 20, and then, of course, an improved intersection?
Yes, there would be that dedicated left turn here, and then also the dedicated left... Yes, there would be that dedicated left turn here, and then also the dedicated left down here.
No other improvements are required on Wind Road. When we say Wind Road is a, is a minimum standard of state road, I can remember years ago before Foley Station was first built, then other plans came in, in Ackerman, which was not much more than sand and asphalt sprinkled out of the back of a truck with a shovel by inmates at the time. That's all that was, and the potholes were big enough that we could drop these chairs we're sitting in on them, and, and we made them make improvements there because of the additional traffic. I sit here and look at this and think of construction traffic going up and down that road, and if it's not, does not have a good road base, we're going to have a road that I don't know if it'll get as bad as Ackerman Road got, because that was horrible. And we stopped all the projects. This is before you got here and made the developers figure out how to do it, and they paved the road. So I, I just have a big concern with that. If they're going to access an old road that's been there for many years, and it's an old country road, and you're going to have construction equipment going up and down it, what the condition of Wind Road's going to be, and who's going to be responsible for making the improvements? Because if it digs out potholes like it has in some older unimproved roads, that's a big concern.
I know in other projects, we've restricted construction traffic by condition to certain entrances. I don't know if that's something that's possible for this site, but I would think so.
Okay, just, just asking. All right, I'll stop unless someone else asks. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews? Okay, Mr. Delge.
Yeah, I, I drove down Wind Road, the first time I ever drove down, I drove down it today, and I didn't dare drive 45 on it. It was so narrow, and there were so many driveways. How does this, Mr. Treesenberg, mesh with our, what we're attempting to do with our connectivity policy with new and old neighborhoods? And then the other question is, who, who's responsible for maintaining? Is the state road? So it's kind of on their schedule for fixing it?
Yeah, Wind, Wind Road is, Wind Road and New Bethel and Hebron are all state, state roads, so it's, it's up to them. You know, we did, we did put this into the transportation plan as kind of a key component to offer additional ways out. You know, as much as, you know, Wind Road does have some neighborhoods, and I understand it's, it's probably a lot of family parcels that have been divided over the years, it's still, we would consider them still in planning. Redeve, redevelopable parcels. They're still quite large. So, you know, Wind Road is really, from that perspective, a future kind of additional, it's, it's a collector for the future. Right now, it's only serving however many homes are there today, but eventually this would be one that would need to be widened to at least the collector standard.
People in here live on Wind Road? Okay.
This would be an
Yeah, as of right now, because it's not, it's not annexed into the town, so it's not a town maintenance responsibility.
Mr. Vance?
I was just, just trying to listen to the last statement. You said it's not annexed into the town.
Wind Road is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I have, I have some concerns about the, about Wind Road in reference to, about being a minimal, I guess, minimum criteria for a road, and with this, I would consider a dense development going in there.
Sure. You know, I hate, I hate to say it, but there's, you know, two-lane roads are envisioned to be able to handle a certain amount of traffic. I don't think that this exceeds that. You know, I realize for folks that live along these roads, it's a big, it's a big change, no denying that. But as far as, you know, from a engineer's, planner's perspective, a two-lane road should be able to handle, you know, thousands of trips a day, not tens of thousands, but thousands. So
At that point, we've looked at other neighborhoods and not allowed connections and cut-throughs because, and they're all two-lane roads up in Cloverdale, Greenbrier, all these places. And we've given extra consideration for the disruption that, a road that people are used to walking down that don't have sidewalks, that they're safe. And people drive differently through things that aren't their neighborhood. We all know this. They just, I'm going, I'm going to get home. So that just gives me a lot of concerns about taking Mr. Vance's. We'll get into this Condition 20 in a second.
Anything else, sir?
No questions, no, no further questions.
Okay. Okay, any, anything else?
Condition 20. Can you put that up on the screen so that it can be more easily referenced? It's in the agenda. So when they came before us the first time, asked the question, how much is this going to cost the town of Garner? That was my big question, and the answer was, nothing. We're going to pay for all of it. So my concern is twofold. As, as we look at this tonight and potentially move it to Planning Commission, i, if there's going to be a developer agreement that is included by reference to the zoning, I don't know why we have all these conditions in the zoning that are so limiting. The one that bothers me the most is if at the time of the first subdivision plat recording lots, the developer and town of Garner are not able to secure the right-of-way, for these improvements, the developer will pay a fee in lieu of 50% of the estimated construction cost and have no further obligation to this condition. Now, one, that, that sounds terrible, but one, it shouldn't precede the negotiations we're going to have on a developer agreement, especially for someone who came in here three months ago saying they were going to pay for the whole thing. So I'm not sure why we would vote on, on this and then have it go to Planning Commission while we're in parallel trying to do this developer agreement that if we approve it in this format, is already tying our hands on our ability to negotiate a developer agreement.
So it's my, it was my recommendation, again, this is the language that the developer proposed initially to kind of kick off the discussion. It was my recommendation that the majority of this come out of the condition and just be relegated to the, this stuff needs to be completed by either this number of building permits or this number of COs, and so the condition would be limited to just that. The rest would then go into the development, development agreement, and Terry's been looking, Town Attorney's been looking into that and can probably offer a little more guidance on that portion.
For council and the public's information, a developer agreement would be subject to a separate public hearing after that agreement is fleshed out. It has to be available for that public hearing. It can be, that public hearing could be done in conjunction when it comes back with your approval, but it would probably, a decision on the developer agreement might have to occur either before or concurrent with any, like, formal approval. So I agree, some of these conditions are not typical to a zoning condition as they are to what would be required about who pays for improvements, when the improvements must be done, those kinds of things that would be naturally part of a development agreement. So, you know, I've just seen this set, but this is not everything that would be in that agreement. This is somewhat of a, the, the framework, but there's still more details to be put into place.
Singleton, since he wants to speak on it, I would almost have the condition that this rezoning is contingent upon the successful negotiation of a development agreement. So we can get all of those conditions, because again, the, the fact they presented this to us is a little insulting. They'll pay 50% of the estimated construction cost. We've seen what happens to estimates. Joan Sausage Road went from $2 million to $8 million. If they, I mean, so we got a lot of work to do on that piece, and so I'm okay with potentially going on to Planning Commission for consistency review, but there's a lot, this is a, the first offer is always the worst, so we got, we got a long way to go before a value to the town in, in this.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, did you want to?
Well, I agree with what Mr. Delge stated, and as Attorney General just noted, the developer agreement has got to go, if, if this project's just going to move forward, it's got to go parallel. One's not going to, we're not going, I don't think that this council would rezone or approve anything until the developer agreement is agreed upon with both parties, or all three, however many parties there are going to be. The language is, I agree, the 50% is, I'm sitting there, I read that, I'm like, I wonder what's cooking here. So I had no trouble with going to the Planning Commission so they can look at some of the issues that were brought up. I know that Mr. Lee brought the issue up about fences, and there is a condition here about fences, and I would hope they would do, if this ever got approved, do more than minimum. I hate that you use that word, minimum, because minimum or inexpensive ends up being minimum or inexpensive. And also address the, maybe have Planning Commission with any feedback on the Wind Road connection. I understand why it's there because it's part of our connectivity policy, but it's a narrow 20-foot road that's probably not built to withstand maybe some of the intensity that may come up if this got approved, but I agree that a developer agreement has got to go in parallel before I think this council would approve, would consider approving any rezoning.
Mr. Attorney? Would be worked on parallel to it going to the Planning Commission and coming back to us, is that right? Or?
Ideally.
Ideally.
Yeah, depends on, to some extent, the terms and, and when we can schedule the public hearing for the development agreement.
The development agreement has really nothing to do with the Planning Commission. They're looking at more for a technical review of the proposal and the zoning and the consistency and so forth. The developer agreement is what we have been discussing with Mr. King, has come and talked with us about what they're proposing at Bryan Road and White Oak, so that's, that's separate. And if that takes longer than the normal schedule, then it takes longer, and we'll talk about it when it's ready, or when both, when the parties believe they have a viable agreement.
Well, okay, I, go ahead.
I would also recommend to everyone who lives on Wind Road and to the developer, the developer, reach out to the people on Wind Road and try to work something out on what's going to make that a livable, workable situation, whether it's in traffic calming, you know, but you'll be well-served to engage your neighbors and try to come up with a solution.
Okay, I believe I've heard a consensus of the council, in spite of your concerns, well, I should say, a little of your concerns, to go ahead and refer this to the Planning Commission, which is the logical next step. So I'm going to officially close the public hearing, and a motion would be next in order unless the council wants to discuss the motion briefly, but a simple motion is to send it to the Planning Commission for a plan consistency review and recommendation.
Question?
Motion need to include the removal of 20 or Condition 20? I want the Planning Commission to look at it and get confused because they look at all the conditions as well, right?
Yeah. You know, as I, as I noted at the beginning, these still are under talks and negotiations, so we've made notes on those, and they will continue to get revised for Planning Commission and before they would come back to you. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right.
Ready for the motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that conditional zoning request, CZMP 21-12, be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Thanks, sir. I'm sorry, there was a second here. Mr. Delge or Ms., yeah, okay, Ms. Behringer. All right, council, motion is properly before you then to refer this to the Planning Commission. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? There is none. Okay. Thank you all who were here for this hearing and for the information that you shared. I appreciate the courtesy as you did that, and so we will be following the next logical process, which will bring it back to the council. Thank you. All right, we are now at item four under public hearings. Mr. Treesenberg, I recognize you again, sir.
All right, the last planning case of the night is White Oak Storage. Again, a conditional zoning with master plan request. This is a small site plan as opposed to a subdivision. The applicant is Ball Rentals. The location is right at the intersection of Bryan and White Oak Road. We're certainly getting our mileage out of discussing that intersection tonight. This site is just about shy of three acres, and again, this is a Tier Two master plan with written conditions going from a single-family R40 and office institutional. It's a combination of those two zones currently, and is proposed to go to a light industrial, which again, the focus there is on indoor kinds of things. Light industrial conditional for the construction of approximately 94,500 square feet enclosed self-storage. Again, there are use restrictions and architectural amenity conditions proposed. So here is the site tucked in here behind Avalon, not, yeah, Avalon Apartments. Step with the one across the way. So here is the intersection. There's currently, the apartments own this little flag that comes out here. I'm not sure why that wasn't utilized back in the day, but the current operators of the site do have a driveway that traverses it. The applicant may have some up-to-date information about that. I know at one time we were discussing whether or not that might be an option. Again, here is the site looking northbound on White Oak towards the shopping center. Bryan Road coming in from the left, so the site is right over here. And that off to the right. Here you can see the back two parcels, again, are currently zoned O and I. The two in the front are the R40, and you have this big MXD1, that old zoning surrounding most of the site. The zoning case, history in the area, again, mostly from R40 to other types of development districts, a few others. So again, for the existing zoning, we have about half of the site, 1.38 acres, that are zoned, the R40 in the front along White Oak Road would currently allow single-family detached as well as a few other special uses. Similarly, similarly sized areas zoned office institutional in the back. That district has served as one of those transitions between single-family detached residential and more, more intense districts. Currently, this is the list of uses that they have proposed as being permitted on the site. I will note that we had talked with the applicant about potentially reducing this number down a little bit. I think it has come down some. I always caveat this by saying that the site plan is also an attached condition of the zoning, so if one of these uses did not actually fit the site plan going forward, we as staff would be requiring it to be rezoned regardless. But most of those, I think, could fit the, the proposed site plan, but I'm not sure that they all would. Architectural conditions proposed are listed in your staff report. They stated their intent to model this after a similar project, which is currently under construction on Integrity Drive, which if you're familiar with the area, that's off of Joan Sausage on the Raleigh side of I-40. They have proposed including the use of architectural exterior metal panels. This is something that we're continuing to see questions about. I will note that so far the town, we as staff have limited that to 50% as a secondary material on any projects. Most of these tend to come in so far along the 7401 corridor. This location is not in either one of those, so there really is no other This location is not in either one of those, so there really is no other prescribing standard. But architectural for non-residential is always up to negotiation and debate between the town and the applicant. What I have seen of it, I think it actually can look very good, but I would not be inclined to dip or go above that 50% use. So the applicant has proposed those in a combination with brick and glass. As noted with the previous case, these architectural and site design conditions will continue to be refined based on staff input, input from the public, your feedback, and feedback from the Planning Commission. The character of the area, this is again, a growing part of the community, right on the edge of White Oak Shopping Center. Certainly lots of apartments in the area, so self-storage seems to be a good use and one that doesn't introduce a lot of traffic to this location, which is a good thing. The project will have about 300 feet of frontage on White Oak Road and they will be responsible for widening their portion. If other projects do go through, this is a possible candidate for one of those kind of cooperative sharing agreements for the overall road improvements in the area. Neighborhood meeting was held on April 11th, four folks in attendance. 10 neighboring properties were included in the notification. Again, this is just a master plan for a site plan. Site plans are going to look remarkably simpler than a subdivision plan, but you see the general concept here at this point. The access drive is shifted as far from the intersection as possible. You see the roadway improvements here illustrated along with the sidewalk installation, some kind of stormwater facility here in the front. We have gates, gate fence combinations here to the back of the site, dumpster in the back corner, and articulated front facade wrapping around the corners. Pretty much it. Sidewalk connecting from the exterior into the site, main entrance here in the front. And the project will have just that one access point on White Oak, frontage improvements including curb gutter and sidewalk, as well as any NCO DOT required turn lanes. There's not any anticipated at this time, but that could be a condition of their driveway permit still. This site, again, as noted, is a possible candidate for cooperation with others on those White Oak Road improvements. Sliding scale for non-residential, I think that actually should be 10 to 12%. For those projects, the master plan does envision 15% canopy via preservation with just about half an acre of preserved in addition to their new street trees and other vehicular surface area shade trees. The perimeter buffer is a 35-foot buffer, but the apartments had to install half of that as part of their project. So that's an automatic kind of buffer sharing agreement that is authorized, excuse me, by the UDO. So they will be providing the remaining 17 and 1/2 feet. And again, street trees provided every 40. No FEMA-designated floodplains or riparian buffers. The streams appear to stay largely to the west side of White Oak, so nothing present on the site from that standpoint. Service being provided by Raleigh Water. There are currently sewer stubs both to the north and the south of the site and water along the frontage of White Oak Road. And a reminder that staff will check for lighting during the full site plan review and review the specifics of the stormwater management devices. We will recheck the landscaping and parking and Garner Fire will make sure that the hydrants are adequately spaced and located. And then as with the others, Planning Commission is required by state statute to make that written recommendation regarding the consistency with adopted plans. And it will come back to you for a final reasonableness statement in support of the action that you take. And again, we recommend that once you have heard comments, concerns, questions from the applicant and the public, that this request per the UDO be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Treesenberg. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant in a minute. Any questions for Mr. Treesenberg on his presentation? Okay, hearing none. Do you know who's next?
Yes, Mr. Douglas Ball is here.
Oh, yes, Mr. Ball.
And he has Mr. Tony Tate, landscape architect with him.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Douglas Ball, 1401 Avery's Pearl Road. We've been meeting with Jeff via Zoom and emailing really since last September on this project. So we look forward to bringing it back to you for approval hopefully after we go to the planning board. You know, we've presented him with quite a few details on what the, what the project can look like and will certainly engage an architect and do a lot of things as necessary when we come back for full site plan review. Keith Roberts has been working on it as well as Tony Tate and Russ Briggs and a lot of still the details to be worked out with the storm drainage and how it works. Obviously, we want the pond to be as small as possible and rather it not be out front, but that seems to be where it's headed today. But just a little quick note on, you know, the site. You know, it's not a real glamorous use, but self-storage, it's a need for a community and every community needs it. And so the multi-story brick facade and glass tends to be a lot more palatable for the neighbors. We have data that can show that we're, you know, eight to 15 trips a day for a, you know, for a building that's a $7 million asset to the community versus really 50-person or 50-kid permitted daycare with two additional houses on the property. So, you know, we can bring that back as more formal presentation with a traffic engineer, but we easily could say 100 trips a day versus what we experience. So we're very low-volume business. We don't even open till 8:30 in the morning, so the rush of White Oak will be over. We close by 5:00. We do more of our business on the weekends, so we're really not fighting with that White Oak commute traffic, I think. So I think it's a pretty good use for the site and hopefully support it and available for any questions you have.
Okay, let me see if we have any, much, much less of an issue of generation of traffic in this proposal here, I can see.
Needs to be the subject of the day.
Yes, okay. All right, Mr. Matthews, anything, Mr. Ball?
No, sir. Good presentation.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Mr. Roberts has spoken with the owner off and on over the years about her property. And so I'm glad this is, I mean, we talked about this a few years ago. I said, slow traffic is one of the best things could ever go there because it backs up to so many apartments. Bit of history, that school, that building in the back used to be a shoe show, shoe in, shoe hut, something many, many years ago. So I can remember my family going to shopping there many times. That's on the original White Oak Road when there really wasn't anything else out there. But that used to be a shoe store many years ago.
So, yeah, you know the history of it pretty well.
Yes, sir.
I'll start at the end and come back around. Mr. Vance?
A shoe show? Wow. Okay.
There was a shoe, a shoe business in that building for several years, yes.
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Delinger?
Just, you don't have any concerns with the potential redevelopment of that intersection and building it in conjunction with the plans that are kind of floating around? That works out for you?
Yeah, it, you know, we appear to be kind of stepping into a bigger, a bigger issue, but certainly we look forward to trying to do what we can to.
Ms. Behringer?
Just one question. What is going to happen with the daycare? Is that going to close or relocate or do you know?
Yeah, I think it would be closing, I assume. And so, yeah, it would be closing, yes, that's correct. And, you know, kind of as a traffic conversation, typically those kids are coming from out of town where we're, there's a lot of data that shows that we only, we only serve about a five-mile radius in the software business, so we're really not pulling any to the community.
Okay, that it for a question from Mr. Ball? Thanks, sir. Good to see you again and appreciate it. Anybody else going to speak for the applicant? Mr. Roberts, you're not involved with this one, is that right? Okay, all right. I believe a motion is in order then, again, to refer this to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation, so.
Just confirm there's no other public comment?
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, anybody here that wish to speak on this issue as a public hearing? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Now we'll go to closing the public hearing and asking for a motion.
I move.
Go ahead.
We recommend conditions under request CZ MP 2205 be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton, Mr. Matthews. The motion is properly before council at this time. If you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. So the motion carries and so ordered. We've made pretty good progress along the way in our agenda. I'm inclined to call for a recess here and we'll come back and get to some other important business, but we're making good progress, I think. So I declare at least a, maybe a 15-minute recess. If you come back in 10 minutes, we'll start then. Thank you.
I'd get early.
Any comments?
I will just pretty much echo what has already been said. Appreciate the hard work of the staff. I know this is a difficult time during the budget, development of the budget and the expla- and by me being on the council for several years, it's a learning process and I've learned a lot going through this process. And to echo what Councilwoman Behringen said about breaking it down where we know that it's a two cent increase that was already approved in the bond referendum, a two cent increase to cover, to cover the necessary expenses to keep the town running effectively. So again, I would say appreciate all the hard work from everyone. I know some folks were out of, out of their comfort zones and pulling this together and it is a work well done in my opinion.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, of course, echo what has been said. This has been a difficult season. Appreciate the staff doing what you have done and, you know, I appreciate that $93 for a $250,000 home. You can do the math, you know, if you've got a $400,000 home, but the price of having 15 firefighters there if you need them, everything for the police, the services running the town of Garner is a big business and we don't take it lightly. We spend your dollars very wisely and like Ms. Behringen said, I have to pay them too. So I think the council has made a good decision. Everybody won't agree with it, but to do what we had to do and, and it was hard, but I think we've made a good decision here and we can move forward with this and appreciate everybody's cooperation and ability to work together. I think we picked it apart as much as we could and, and time to move forward.
Thanks, sir. Okay, and Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, just to echo the rest of council, appreciative of staff's efforts on the budget. A lot of tough decisions. I think, though, we also made a lot of progress towards next year in terms of projecting out and doing better than we've even done in the past and merging some of our growth, known growth metrics with our needs. And I think next year will be easier. Nobody's ever happy with any budget and nobody's ever happy with any tax increase, but we're all in this together at the end of the day and we'll be in it together next year too, so.
Okay, well, thank you, and I will do that in these comments. As I reflected on the process that brought us to this time and, and the, and the current vote, I'm thinking about the various work time, extra work sessions that the council had working through the budget and, and I commend council and appreciate your hard work. I would say from my perspective, thi- this has been, I think, one of the more difficult budget years, maybe the most, I'm not sure, but I think, I think you can't really talk about the budget process without reflecting on the impacts of COVID-19 on our people and our town. And, and I know that there are many citizens who have suffered in, in different ways, some through loss of a job and, and the uncertainty of their jobs. And of course, that doesn't account for the emotional and physical toll taken on people due to COVID-19 itself and even the deaths of, of any number of folks. But I, I'm thankful that we seem to be moving beyond some of the worst effects of COVID. And I think we're finally experiencing some degree of normalcy, whatever normalcy means, I guess, means different things maybe to different people. But in this setting, I, I want to, I want to thank our citizens for pulling together during these very difficult times, a- as they always do. This town has an indomitable spirit about it, I think. And I'm reminded that they approved, our town approved a bond referendum last year that allows our town to move ahead with critical infrastructure investments in our community. And some of those include money for storm water improvements, a fifth fire station, additional firefighters, some road widening and improvements and, and phased development of two parks, and expansion of greenways. Those are all things that I'm excited about and I'm pleased that we're, we're moving ahead with those. And so I would just say, as our town continues to grow, there's increasing demands for services, which results in the need for additional employees and equipment and other, other items as well, but those are just a couple I'll mention. In spite of our challenges, I want to commend our council, this council, for making the difficult decisions on both current needs and longer range, excuse me, projections or priorities. And I would say to this council and to our public, I believe this budget will serve our town well for the next budget cycle and we'll deal with the next one when it comes along. But thanks to our staff and the budget team for your diligent work in bringing us to this point. So, so with that, council, unless staff has anything else to share with us, I'm going to ask for a motion. Anything?
Only thing I would share is just to thank the budget team, John and David for, you know, making sure we got started on time and giving staff the necessary direction to get started and kind of keeping things going. And then Mari stepping into a new role, probably not knowing what to expect, and we kind of threw her right there in the budget, mix of the budget, and she kind of became my contact between the departments and the budget team, I'm the liaison there. And then Jody coming in and using her experience and just stepping right in there and making sure we all got this, got this done as a team. So this budget was different than any other and we all pulled together and I'm just proud of the team for the work that they did. So thank y'all very much. And anybody I left out, I want to also thank the department heads and all of the other staff for their assistance in getting this done, so, and the council. Thank you.
Okay, council, the final action is now required to put a motion on the floor to approve this budget and let's get it passed.
I move that we adopt a budget ordinance 2020-5130 and FY 2022-23 fee schedule as recommended.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringen, for the motion.
Discussion.
Second by Mr. Vance?
There was a motion developed because of my current situation with one of the line items that, within the budget, which I have to, uh, recuse myself from, so I would like to make an amendment to that motion. And I would like to move the adoption of a budget ordinance 2022-513, including all anticipated expenditures except portion of special appropriations allocated to the Community of Hope Ministries.
Second.
Okay. But does it, she, does it, a motion has been?
What you said.
Okay.
I believe, and let me clarify this with Ms. Jones, I, I believe, is it going to be proper for us to take two votes, one for the recusal and then the other one, or?
Technically, you don't have to vote to accept the recusal because the recusal is required by state law due to session law 2021-191. However, there will be, have to be a second vote on the appropriation and that vote would not include Councilman Vance.
Okay.
Specific appropriation for Community of Hope.
So, so, so the motion he just made is properly before us at this point in time?
Yes, and he is able to vote on that particular motion.
Okay, and then we will need a subsequent motion, right? Okay.
That is in your packet.
Right. Okay, council, so on the motion before us at this point in time, for which Mr. Vance is eligible to vote, I ask you, if you approve of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, would you vote no? Okay, and the council has unanimously passed the FY 22-23 budget on that vote. And then, let's see, Ms. Attorney, now we need a subsequent worded motion?
Mr. Vance has recused from this motion, which would be a move the adoption of budget ordinance 2022-5130, including the anticipated expenditure to Community of Hope Ministries, a local nonprofit organization that Councilmember Vance is affiliated with as a board member.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton, Mr. Matthews, okay? Any questions, council? All right, on this motion, what say you, council? If you favor this motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if you're opposed, no, and there is none. So, some, some sense perhaps of, of relief and appreciation really, and thank you all for your, for your work through this process. I don't know that I have any other words of wisdom to offer, but thank, thank you Rodney and the, and the entire staff for getting us to this point. And for our citizens out there, you know, I, I do want to note that we received any number of inquiries and obviously some people spoke against any tax raise and I don't think we just arbitrarily push those aside. We, we understand and appreciate those concerns, but in the final result, I believe this council has done what needed to be done at this particular time to, to move our town ahead, and I believe we have done that. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I would just note that as part of this budget approval, that also included the fee and charges ordinance schedule that is included in the packet and will be posted on our website.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, may I, did previously send you a handout that our legal intern, Emmanuel Mahongas, prepared about the tax relief program? And that is appropriate if you have any constituents that are interested in more information about the tax relief and utility assistance programs that are currently available. Some deadlines may, may be passed, but, so that they have that information as they face this upcoming tax year. And if you want, I can, can resend that and provide it to our communications.
Okay, I, I think that would be a good idea if you, if you would do that. Okay, what say you?
I got it because I looked at it. It's finished off.
Okay, just one other thing I'll say, it's, it's not my habit to necessarily single out people or try to recognize folks because I'll recognize some and forget others, but there's been a gentleman with us during these latter days of the budget process and he shared with us some thoughts and observation. I'm terrible at names, but it's Rex.
Wayley.
Rex Wayley, yeah, exactly. And Mr. Wayley, we appreciate your having interest in the process and sticking with us through this thing and, and sharing some of your insights as well. Good to see you again. Okay, by my calculation, we have now completed, well, no, we haven't completed our regular agenda. We have a few reports. Are there any committee reports at this time?
There is.
Okay, let me hear from, is this Personnel Committee?
Personnel Committee, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I have several recommendations for individuals on the various committee and boards. A number of them are reappointments and several, one I know of is a new appointment, first with the Board, for the Board of Adjustments. First, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Dillinger for his organization and his help in pulling this together. He's been a great help and, and Ms. Stella and also all others in helping us pull all this together with, and Ms. Knox in pulling all this information together in orderly fashion so that we can continuously do this in the manner in which we are doing it. First, we look at the Board of Adjustments. We have three reappointments, one being Mr. Ellis Williams, Mr. Willie Dupree, and Judith Ratcliffe. That's four reappointments for the Board of Adjustments. The next is for the Garner Veterans Advisory Committee, Mr. Matthew Padone to be reappointed, and one new appointment, Ms. Helen Carter for the Veterans Advisory Committee. Next is for the Parks and Rec, a new appointment, Ms. Hope Weber. And we have also a new appointment, Mr. Mark Wood and Mr. R. Scott Bear, new appointments for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I ask that the council consider the individuals that have been brought before you for rea- for reappointment and for, to be newly, and also the new appointments to be approved. If you'd like to discuss, we can, but that's what I'd like to bring before you tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, and you bring it in the form of a motion, so is there a second to that? And then if there's any discussion, you have a second to that, Mr. Dillinger? Okay, any, any questions you want to ask of this committee relative to the information they brought forward?
And just a point of clarification, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Stella Gibson, and also Ms. Ashley Knox have been instrumental in helping us pull all this information together. So thank you, thank you all.
Okay, right. And thank you, Ms. Gibson, as well. Okay, any, any other questions for the committee before we vote? Okay, hearing none. If you approve of the motion brought to us by the Personnel Committee and the names you heard here to be appointed, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And there is no opposition, or if there is any, would you vote no? And there is none. So thank you, thank you, committee, we appreciate that. Mr. Manager, your opportunity, sir?
Yes, Mayor, Town Council, manager reports. You have a, a handout in your packet called Talk of the Town Report, and it's kind of a new report that was developed primarily by Ms. Miller, and it is a replacement for some of the other things that we give you, just, just a matter, to give you a update on several items, so I'll, I'll let her talk about that a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The Talk of the Town Report is a new monthly report that staff will prepare for council, and it really combines sort of two reports that we have been providing throughout the month. The first is the requests that the council has been providing or of the, of the staff or specific issues that you want us to look into. This will be a place where we can provide an update so everyone gets a current status of those issues. And also, we're going to provide information from the Garner app, Info App. The information from the Garner Info App is going to be a little different than you've seen in the past. In the past, we had a chart that had very specific sort of incident issues as they were reported through the app. What we're going to report to you monthly is the analytics from that app, and it's going to give you a broader perspective of the types of incidents or service requests that we're receiving through the app. It's going to give you a status report on where we are as far as responding to those issues and requests and whether they've been completed. And you'll also get a better sense of which departments are responding to those different areas. So you'll start seeing this monthly report on the second meeting agenda of every month. Certainly, if you're additional questions based on any of the information or if you'd like more detail, please reach out to us and let us know. But we figured this was the best way to kind of combine all the information in one place for council and for the public to see sort of the, what we're calling the Talk of the Town, sort of the monthly operational issues that we're dealing with here at the town. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And let me compliment you, this is a dandy little item right here, now, I'm telling you. It is, you got everything lined up. I do like the way you did the Garner Info because it breaks down basically just like if you went down to your phone and went down the categories, that's basically what you did. And I looked at the tall grass calls on here, I probably made 10 or 12 of those, but it's, it's, that's what you, that's the report you find on your, that's just the way you looked at it. So I appreciate that, who's responding and so forth, and, and the reports that you gave us from council members' comments. So that's, that's a neat little tool, thank you.
I'd also like to comment and thank Mari Howe for her expertise and the design and formatting. She worked with myself and a few others on creating the format, so we have a template that's easy for us to use from month to month. And Mr. Singleton, to your point, although we're providing the data analytics reports to the council, I wanted to let you, the council, know that as far as the individual incident reports, that's still being filtered to staff. So staff is still looking at the individual reports, they're doing follow-up, and that level detail is still happening. It's just a different filter essentially with the software, and we're still using that internal system to track and monitor and complete tasks and requests.
One comment, I saw Mari's fingerprints all over the graphics, but again, miss you, DGI. You've, you've upped the bar now. Can we get a growth of the town report once a month as well with COs and?
We're working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're working on that. Yeah, I think we were gonna, we were gonna introduce it, I think, the last meeting, but this agenda was so heavy that we pulled it back. But yeah, it's coming.
I'm excited.
It's coming.
If you want to email me a preview, I'd love to see.
And I would just comment quickly that I know we can't necessarily expect this level of completion each time, but you know, that, that one circle is pretty much blue all the way, just about, so obviously a lot of attention given there. And then you see below there the responding department, so yeah, I like the, I like the format and the information, so kudos to those of you who pulled it together.
All right. Couple of other things to mention, or handful of things to mention. The Launch Garner Program will be accepting applications through the close of July the 8th, and that's a program for businesses, those in business or aspiring to be in business, is training, hands-on mentoring, and peer networking. So that's run through the Garner Economic Development Department, and so we just encourage those that might be interested to look into that. You can go to launchgarner.com website. Also wanted to mention, it was mentioned previously about the night market starting on Friday. The next one after that will be September 23rd, so there will not be a night market the months of July and August, they're typically really, really hot, and so they skip those months and go into the fall after the one on Friday. Give you an update on July the 3rd, which is just right around the corner. We started off our Garner celebration, Freedom Celebration with Juneteenth Celebration on Sunday, so I'll reserve that comment for maybe the mayor and council member Dillinger, but just to give you some updates on July the 3rd, that will be from 5:00 to 10:00, Lake Benson Park, gates open at 5:00. We'll have performance by Joe Brown and the band starting at 5:15. They'll play a couple of sets, then we'll hear from the NC Symphony at 8:30, and they'll give about a one-hour concert. Fireworks begin after the concert. We will have kids game with activities, Garner Veterans Memorial Tours from 5:30 to 7:30. Of course, parking is free on-site, first come, first served. We want to just encourage those that can to use the free shuttle service. You can park at South Garner High School at 8228 Hebron Church Road and be shuttled in by bus to the park, Lake Benson Park. And just remember, for rules, we do not allow pets, athletic, not athletic, alcoholic beverages, tents, grills, glass containers, drones, or tailgating. So just to let you know about that, exciting. We brought that back after a one-year hiatus due to COVID, and so we're looking forward to bringing it back even stronger, kind of back to its traditional concept. Really excited about that. All right? Any questions about that? Not leave out anything, Maria? All right.
Vendors, vendors?
There will be vendors, so there'll be food vendors just as before in the back, back row.
I would just note, I, I think all council members have received a, what do you call it? Before the orchestra begins their performance and places to meet and opportunities to see that magnificent crowd from the stage there, so follow that if you will. And I guess everyone is anticipated to, to wear a shirt that glows in the dark, huh? No, I'm teasing.
Um, we'll see about that.
Okay.
All right, so a couple of other things just to mention for the public. The Garner Police Department will close Buffalo Road between Aversboro Road and Highway 50 at 5:00 on July the 3rd to all through traffic. There'll be officers posted at each end allowing residents and their guests to access the affected neighborhoods during the street closure. And I think we have passes, certain passes to let folks in.
Resident access, yes.
Residents access passes.
Vandora is going to be closed off from Vandora on Buffalo down to the park. Last year, I think it was.
Any idea, I'll put you on the spot, whether Vandora is going to be closed off? We typically allow traffic from both sides, so.
Last year, I know, we had somebody coming to visit and they couldn't, they wouldn't let them go down Buffalo from Vandora.
It's blocked at my house at Navin Lane, somewhere right along there, coming in.
Yeah, so Aversboro Road.
Vandora to the park down Buffalo.
I think Vandora is typically open, but we can find out. I don't want to tell you wrong, so I'll, I'll find out and get back with you on that. And of course, at the end of the show, they is, you either turn left or right and it's pretty much one-way traffic in those directions. All right, so that's it for July the 3rd. Want to give you an update on debris removal and the plan for cleaning up some of the vegetative debris that came down during the storm last week and over the weekend, and give you an update of kind of what Public Works has been doing since then. They had a weekend response where the street teams supported emergency operations with signage, signage, and focused on removing debris from travel lanes on streets, facilities and grounds, where in the parks, and entrances of the trails, cleaning up hazards. For the last two days, the town Public Works Department has picked up 80 tons of debris removed from streets by the street sweeper, and they've extended the hours of operation for the street sweeper. 18 dump truck loads of debris have been removed from the right-of-ways that were previously blocking travel lanes. Public Works Facilities Team ensured building systems, systems were operating at normal status. Grounds Teams began removing debris from the grounds around facilities, open areas, and parks, and the leadership team has been monitoring and assessing the amount of debris throughout town, so we'll talk about that at the very end. The remainder of this week, the grounds is scheduled to have all current reported hazards removed from the parks and common areas by Friday afternoon. Streets is scheduled to continue removing debris from the sides of right-of-ways this week and will continue extended sweeper operations. And Public Works and Communications Team will finalize planning and public information strategy regarding the townwide cleanup efforts in the coming weeks. Early next week, they'll continue sweeper operations and removing debris from the mowing routes so they can get back to mowing. In the middle of next week, all teams transition from storm response to July 3rd preparation. So it kind of came at a bad time, there's no good time for something like that, but pretty much as we get to July the 3rd, it'd be all hands on deck for Public Works. So the plan going forward, we've got a lot of calls, a lot of inquiries, some emails. I know council's got some emails on what the town plans to do about the vegetative debris throughout town. It was a, a townwide event, and so the plan is starting the week of July the 4th, which of course we're off on the 4th, so on Wednesday the 5th, staff will come in, is that the 5th, 6th?
Tuesday's the 5th.
Yeah, we have a, well, okay, Tuesday the 5th, that week, Public Works will do a townwide cleanup. The plan is to start on the Orange Route and starting on the Orange Route because they believe that will probably be the heaviest route, it's probably some of the more wooded areas of town. And then from that, they will follow their, the solid waste colored maps. So whatever your, your color is for whatever day yours gets picked up, that's what they'll try to follow. It won't be perfect because some, like I said, some areas are going to be heavier than others, but we will do a unprepared pickup. We ask that you get it out to the curb. We do not pick up contractor loads, so if you have a contractor, they will need to arrange for that to be removed by the contractor. But however homeowner debris, we will pick that up, and we're asking that if you do want it picked up sooner and you can prepare it, that we ask you to prepare per the town ordinance, which is typically no longer than four feet long, no more than 60 pounds, tied and bundled or put in a container. So if you do that, you, you can get it picked up sooner. But for the unprepared, we'll start that the week of July the 4th, so, and that's the plan going forward.
And I know the contractor picked up some today, that, that was prepared, so they've already started that process.
Yep, so they'll continue to do that. So the town ordinance does allow for council to approve special pickup, so I don't know if we need a, an official vote, but I just want to make sure you're okay with that schedule. We figure two weeks from now, that's going to give, all of us not at the road, so that's going to give residents time. So that's going to give residents time to get it to the street and hopefully ensure that we do one pass through each neighborhood and not have to do a lot of backtracking. And I think there was some talk about maybe having some scheduled pickups if there's some unique situations, but for the most part, we'll go through our routes.
Okay. Any questions from council on that?
Just hope that since that's two weeks from today, that we start publicizing this tomorrow at whatever.
We already have it ready to go out.
And the team hit it, I mean, multiple times on the, from the website, get it out there because people are asking so it can, they're made aware of it. Thanks. I mean, numerous calls, texts, emails, yes. I got one this afternoon, that after you, after Ms. Miller sent us the email about the update, five minutes later, I got an email and I just read the email and said, okay, this is what's going to happen. And other specific dates, but I said, there'll be at least probably a couple of weeks because people need to get stuff out, plus of July 3rd.
And that's typical, what we've done after storm is give that time.
Okay.
Does everybody concur with that, Mr. Mayor? That's the plan?
Council, yes. Give me a thumbs up if you concur. Yes, okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And I believe that's, that's it for me. If I missed anything, staff? I think that's it.
All right. I hear from the town attorney for any report. I know we have a closed session.
No report tonight. We'll be addressing two items in closed session.
All right. We'll go to council reports. Start with Mr. Vance.
I'd like to echo what is, what Councilman Gray Singleton said about the top of the town, dashboard, I call it. It's really eye-catching and a lot of good information here. And also I just picked up one thing for myself here. It's good to see that the public meeting for the Joan Sausage Road is coming up very, very soon. So that is good to see that. I know I've been receiving a lot of questions about that, to see the preliminary designs and possible right-of-way impacts and things of that nature. On Thursday, the 7th, July 7th, we're going to have that at the Garner Senior Center. I'm looking forward to being there. So that's all I have and you already answered the questions. I think that it's a great idea to go out and for the debris pickup. We had a storm that I had never seen before come through and within that, I saw, I was in it. And I saw Garner's finest out there, the police and also the fire departments out there making sure everybody was safe. So that's what was good to see and good to see that, a perfect example of where our bond dollars is going to go to provide those type of services when we need them the most. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I put in a plug for the police real quick?
Please, yeah.
Since Councilmember Vance mentioned them. Everyone remember, when the lights are out, the intersection goes to a four-way stop. Right? I think a lot of, I think a lot of folks don't realize that. It goes to a four-way stop. The main street doesn't just get to keep barreling through while the others never get to go. So it becomes a four-way stop. So is that, is that good? All right.
Probably bears emphasizing because I was out away from my home when the storm struck and so on my way home, yeah, ran through several intersections where there was not stoppage, not for me, but cars in front of me. But yeah, the four-way stop is a good reminder for sure. Thank you. Okay, yeah, Mr. Dellinger?
I'll just comment on behalf of the Juneteenth Committee. There are a lot of thanks to throw around for everybody who contributed to that process and that program, from the committee to town staff, to the town manager's office, to Parks and Rec and the G-PAC staff, communications. Everybody really came together. It was a great program. I think council members that came out, the talent that showed up. It was, you know, just over an hour, but it was just full of energy and thoughtfulness and just, it was a great experience, a good first one. We've gotten feedback from our performers that they are eager to come back. They enjoyed their time and I think it's a good, this is a really good way to kick off going into the July 4th, to get things going and framed. And the mayor read the letter we got from an individual last year and it was just really, the whole, the whole program was great. So thanks, everybody who contributed their time. It was kind of hit and miss and I didn't know how it was going to go until the last minute there, but like once everything got on the stage, it just, it just was, it was just so smooth. And again, I want to thank the G-PAC staff again because they were just outstanding hosts, you know, and hostess, getting out water and helping with programs. It was a very Garner event. So thanks, everybody for.
We'll broadcast that on our channel at some point pretty soon.
Ms. Bearinger?
Sir, this may never happen again, but I'm going to say to Mr. Dellinger again, everything he said was true. I may never say that again.
I think what you said, you said, I think you said, I did a good job.
You did a good job.
I didn't think I heard you right.
Could you repeat it?
This is the third time I've repeated it to him, just so you all know. It was an awesome event. I wish more people had been there to see it. It was outstanding and I, I was really glad to be, to be able to observe it. Question about the speed bumps on Main Street. We talked about that briefly in one meeting. What is the next step or do we know at this point?
I think we were waiting to see and bring back to you the streetscape plan.
Okay.
For that area and then talk about speed bumps in conjunction with that. The next project that got put on was the one for Hay River Street. So that's, that got funded with this resurfacing and then we'll talk about the Main Street and later.
Project timeline, is that too early to ask?
I don't have one. I don't have a projected timeline.
I don't want it to be forgotten.
Right.
And then the third and final thing is in reference to the manager's remarks to Jody and Mari about their help with the budget process and what a good job they did. Mr. Manager, what did you expect? They are women. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, you're next.
Just saying what I'm getting ready to say or not. I'll backtrack. The top, the issue on Main Street, the traffic calming was mentioned in the talk of the town report. So I will go along with the Juneteenth event was, was very nice, a mixture of talent, ages, the young lady that sang at the end who's 80 years old and by the biggest bottle right here, that's the voice that came out of her. Good gracious sakes, man, once she got going, she can sing. And her accompaniment was just as good. She was something else, playing that piano and singing backup. That was something. But it was a very nice event and hopefully it'll, it'll grow over time. Maybe being on Father's Day made it kind of a tough day, you know, against one of those tweaks in the way where the Father's Day felt, but anyway, it was a nice event. I'm going to mention something and this came when we talked about picking up yard debris in Eagle Ridge and I'm going to mention it, something I'd like to see after we get through July 3rd and the storm stuff, maybe work with Mr. Mercer, getting out some information on social media about how, I don't think some people who are new here know that you can do yard waste in a trash can or you can buy one of these from All-Star, the brown rollouts for yard waste. You can buy them. I got two of them, bought them two or three years ago. That's the cat's meow. It's heavy, you own them. And I mean, you know, some of the, some of the piles in Eagle Ridge were substantial. Some of them could have gone in that or to a trash can. You can just go buy, you know, 30, 40 gallon trash can, drill some holes in the bottom and see the rain and run out. I just don't think people realize you can do that. They know we've got, only got eight houses on New Haven Court and every week, at least two or three of us have something out. My neighbor has got, she uses the big tall paper Home Depot bags. She's got eight sitting full of limbs right now. We filled up our four yesterday with what came down in the storm and we got a branch to cut. I think we can squeeze it in there, but this, you know, for some people, you can do that. Putting them in bags is, that's aggravating. I understand that. And if you've got a lot of limbs, you can cut them in time, but the cans is the cat's meow because you can drop them in there and it's easy for All-Star to come by and pick it up and throw it in their yard waste containers. But these right here, let me tell you, because you've got wheels. And not everybody has an acre lot like we do, but if you've got a wheel around the yard, that's nice. I'll say that. But anyway, it costs, but you can buy them, but I, I'll get up with you and see if we can take some pictures and say, hey, do you know that you can do this, you know, for your yard waste every week? Because in my neighborhood and not just our street, the other ones too, people had to pick, because there's so many pine trees. You get a good wind and you got 500 pine cones in the yard. I also want to compliment Public Works because I was driving down Aversboro when it was bad and the trees had just fallen behind Heather Hill's clubhouse and police was right out there. I give them credit because the trees went, I swear it's five lanes and there's only one lane to cross over right in front of the Banfield Hospital and the entrance into CVS and police were right on it, moving traffic. Did a great job. Credit them and Public Works for the work they did. I also want to thank the budget team for all the work that y'all did on the budget this year. It was, it was a tough one. So thank you all for your, your time and commitment to doing that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Just echoing again on the great job that our emergency services team did, police and fire and EMS, the, it's a precursor. We've got hurricane season coming and we hope we never have another Fran or what have you, but I'm sure what happened on Friday was an eye-opener to all of us and that if there's things we need to work on to do better, we, now we know what they are. So that was, but great job on what they did and, and the town coming together because it could have been a whole lot worse, but it hit fast and it was gone fast. I've never seen anything quite like it, but thank God and nobody got killed in the process because the opportunity was certainly could have been there. So great job to all of our services in this town. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Phil, and thank you, council. I certainly would concur with all the comments you made about the storm cleanup afterwards and the ongoing effort that is going there. And just to give a shout out to Mr. Dellinger since he, he really played the role of, I say traffic cop, maybe that's not the right idea, but he was backstage there and so, you know, if, if I needed some direction, he'd say, yeah, get here, you're going to go out now. And so he gets a lot of credit for keeping everything in order and operating pretty smoothly there. And he's right, it's a, it's a wonderful celebration for a wonderful cause and maybe wonderful is not the right word, but a part of our history that people need to know about. And I commend the committee and the members who are on that committee for the good way they are, they are touting that each year and it's, it's going to grow. It's going to, I'm sure of that. Okay, having said those things, I believe we have a closed session that we need next. Is that right? Did I miss anybody?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe the site, is it 143-3811A3A5? Did I get that right or not?
143-318-point-11A3 and A5.
So moved.
Back it.
All right. So motion to go into closed session based on that statutory site. All in favor, please vote aye. And it is unanimous, so I'm going to declare, yeah, okay.
I think, I think we're going to go into the other room for this.
Are we?
Okay, the Chair will declare that the closed session council conducted has been completed. We're now back in open session. I will ask our town attorney if she will briefly summarize the essence of the closed session.
Thank you. In closed session, council did adopt a resolution approving the acquisition of necessary storm drain easements, temporary construction and permanent drainage easements associated with a drainage project on Junction Boulevard. In addition, council met with the town attorney and town staff regarding a potential claim that may be asserted against the town in the future. No decisions were made with respect to that action, but a future decision is anticipated.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, we have completed all the items on our agenda. No other business come before this council. Motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion properly made and selected. All in favor, please vote aye. I declare this meeting
of the council as adjourned. We will plan to see you all at the next scheduled meeting.